Call the meeting to order. I'd like to announce the meeting is being recorded. In accordance with nine forty C M R twenty nine point one zero, remote participation adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee, April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Committee men O'Hare and committee men Lemay will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Do we have any public appearance, any members from the public?
I guess not, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we need a roll call.
Mr. Tassius?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hare?
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen? Mr. Getche?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
And again, are there any members in the public to speak today?
Uh, there are no members from the public to speak today, Mr. Chairman.
All right, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the student representative, Thomas Baronis, to give the student report.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
You too, thank you. So this has been a busy month in Skills USA. The annual in-house award ceremony was held on Thursday, February third, in the main gym. Two hundred and eighty students received ribbons and certificates of excellence at this event. Thank you to all of the staff, administration, and school committee members who came out to support our students. In addition, Skills USA Annual Sale Conference was held last week at Cholet Stadium in the Putnam Club, overlooking the Patriots' playing field. This advanced-level leadership training was attended by chapter officers and focused on networking skills, resume building, financial literacy, and interviewing and self-marketing skills. Skills USA is proud to announce that all six officers in attendance were awarded with their sale credentials after successfully passing the credentials exam. G S A members attended their first regional leadership meeting last week, where they were able to interact with students from other G S As in the area. Students explored various topics such as L G B T Q history, L G B T Q in social media, as well as L G B T Q in their lives. In addition, student groups created presentations to educate the advisors in attendance. The freshman and sophomore class planning committees hosted a Valentine's Social last week. The ninth and tenth graders in attendance designed Valentines, crafted paper flower bouquets, and enjoyed pizza. This extended-day event culminated with Candy Bingo, which ended at five o'clock when the late buses departed. The junior class planning committee is working on their next community service project, which will be a video for local nursing home residents that will provide some fun and uplifting messages from our students. Additionally, class ring sales have begun, and any student interested in purchasing a class ring can do so at justins.com. This past month, the senior class planning committee has been working to choose themes for their prom, which will take place on Friday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the end May. Once the choices have been narrowed, a ballot will be sent to the senior class to vote for a favorite. This year, prom tickets will be sold via My School Bucks, so there will be no waiting in lines to buy tickets. This month, the peer mentors hosted a virtual meeting for its members. Both mentors and mentees participated in a Kahoot game featuring questions about navigating through the school and where to go to for help. The Outing Club and Project Purple are in the process of planning a snow tubing field trip to Neshoba Valley Tubing Park in mid-March. This joint field trip will be open to all students, and tickets will be available through My School Bucks after February vacation. In athletic news, the boys' and girls' basketball are both rounding into form as they head towards the homestretch of their seasons. The boys came out strong right from the opener and currently hold a ten-six record. Recent league wins over Lowell Catholic and K I P P followed an impressive showing in the Greater Lawrence Holiday Tournament, where the boys captured the championship with a win over Ipswich in the finals. After a slow start, the girls' team has gotten going as of late, running off nine straight victories at one point, moving the team's record to ten to five. Both the boys and girls have also qualified for the M I A A State Tournament play. Wrestling has battled through their always-difficult schedule. The Griffin Grapplers had strong showings at the Wilmington Sons of Italy Tournament, as well as the George Bossy Holiday Tournament at U Mass Lowell. The team also wrestled well at the annual state vocational meet on February sixth, placing seventh overall as a team out of a field of over twenty. Indoor track has run well this winter, with a number of Griffin runners posting state qualifying times in a number of events. The team has also become one of the top programs in the C A C since their reinception a few years ago. This year, our boys' team finished as the regular season dual meet championships, while our girls' team went undefeated and captured both the regular season duel and the C A C League Meet Championships. Senior Thile Chandonay was named a league M V P on the girls' side, while Merrimack College-bound-on-an-athletic-scholarship senior Albert Ferraris was named a league M P V for the boys. Swim and Dive has recently pulled out consecutive wins over league opponents Northeast and Greater Lawrence. The team recently wrapped their season with a strong showing at the annual C A C League Meet held on February third. The Griffin cheerleaders have begun what should be a successful invitational competition season, which began on February sixth at Lowell Catholic. The squad will compete in several more competitions to gear up for the M I A A D one regional competition held in early March. And the Greater Lowell Neshoba Tech Ice Hockey Team is looking to make a final push for an M I A A State Tournament spot as they head into the finals weeks of the season. The team currently sits at eight-ten after recent wins over East Boston and Minuteman. Additionally, the team recently raised over seven thousand dollars in their hockey fights cancer game on January thirtieth. Thank you very much.
As always, Tom, great job.
Have a great night, everyone.
On to the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January twentieth meeting?
Yes, so move.
Roll call.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare? Mr. O'Hare? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. Onto the report of the treasurer. Can I have a motion to waive the reading?
Motion.
Second. A roll call?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yep.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the expenditures of four million, two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-nine cents?
So move.
Second. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yep.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. Report of general counsel? I don't see him, so there's none. Superintendent's report at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jill.
Sure, thank you. So the first item on my agenda this evening is something very special. This evening, I'd like to ask our assistant superintendent and principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to come up to join me in recognizing our team of four Greater Lowell Technical High School engineering students who are here with us this evening. Trevor Brown. Trevor, are you here? Do you want to, do you want to stand up and come forward a minute? Trevor Brown, Evan Palmibong, Sam Saltani, and Salavah. So these four students entered a national NASA-sponsored high school competition to test a project on a NASA rocket. And they're here tonight with their instructor. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Barton to announce the very, very special news that we're so very proud of and wanted to honor these students this evening.
Sure. Congratulations. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're here to congratulate and celebrate four engineering students, two that are present with us, Trevor and Salah, and their instructor, Ms. Ewens.
Sure.
And Mr. Canelia, the department chair, the cluster chair is here as well. Thank you, Mr. Canelia. These students entered NASA's Tech Rise Students Challenge under the direction of Ms. Ewens. This challenge invited projects to collect data from the edge of space aboard a sub-orbital rocket, a high-altitude balloon. Their project, preventing lunar dust damage, was selected out of six hundred teams that applied throughout the United States. And I'm proud to say that only fifty-seven teams were selected as winners, two in Massachusetts.
Wow.
So they want a chance to-
They're one of them.
Exactly. They want a chance to continue their experiment with a fifteen-hundred-dollar prize from NASA, a three-dimensional box to develop their project, and a chance on a NASA flight to test their project. They also have regular tech support from NASA engineers. So we'd like to congratulate them, wish them continued luck in your project. I know you're going to be working on your project throughout this year and probably into next year, as I understand it.
Yeah, and then have to get the data back and then, you know, we're gonna do it somewhere. Actually, I'd like to, well, depending on how the project goes, it might be nice to get the data published someplace.
Hmm, even, even great, even another great accolade and accomplishment.
So on behalf of the Greater Lowell Technical High School Committee and our entire school community, we just want to say congratulations. We're so proud of you. And our school committee chair, Mr. Captain Gigi, would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation on your innovation, just to show gratitude that we're so proud of you. And we want to wish you luck as you move forward.
You make our team very proud here.
Yes.
Salah, I have a certificate for you. Congratulations. Nice job. There you go. Trevor, great job.
Nice.
Very impressive. You ought to be very proud of a great staff to help you.
Do you, do you all want to share anything about your experience working on this project?
Sure, I'd probably say it was definitely a little bit of a surprise. I just felt like I was just doing my job, you know, getting by, and here we are. So I'd say we, everybody that was involved with it did a great job. It was really just a collaborative effort. And we didn't have like these team-building moments that weekend with these technical programs, we probably wouldn't be able to do this. So I just want to say thank you guys for that.
That was time to be nice.
Uh, so initially, we wrote the original, like, the plan, the idea that they selected probably three or four months ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we were all brainstorming on that. It was just a- Yeah, it felt, felt like a-
Maybe we all had a week for the deadline.
Wow.
Yeah.
We spent that whole week.
Yeah.
Created.
Yeah.
Writing, correcting, drafting.
Yep.
Was there a lot of debate?
Um, I mean, there's a lot of-
I think we all agreed on it. We had like one or two other ideas, but we agreed on the idea that Trevor here brought up.
I actually didn't, when you first mentioned your idea, I was like, is that really true? You know, because I didn't realize that lunar dust actually has magnetic properties. And I actually looked at it myself, I'm like, oh, that's actually really interesting. So I thought that was, that was a great idea that you came up with, you know, a great observation in your research when you were brainstorming your design idea.
So why does it have negative properties?
Um, that's actually a great question.
I don't remember.
I was just still trying to figure it out.
I gotta hear. I want to hear the hypothesis here.
So now, this is the second phase of the, of the competition, correct? And you are actually testing your-
Yeah, right now, we're in the process of just, you know, finding out materials, ordering stuff, and just getting ready for the build.
And I'm trying to figure it out and learn more about the programming side of it. And I want to program to collect the data when it's in space.
That's awesome.
That's fantastic. Is there anything that the school committee or anybody can help you with? Assist you?
Ask them for money. Say, we need money to support-
Yeah, Fred's got it all.
Yeah, the bill of materials, excuse me, I keep saying the bomb, they're like, what? The bill of materials is actually due our first meeting February twentieth, but I also want to get the Gantt chart, which is the scheduled timeline, and our first test protocol, hopefully by that day too, but definitely the bill of materials. So we'll see how things add up, because we have to get like a precision scale, because the experimental payload has to be under a certain weight, you know, for balance of the rocket, because it has other, it has fifty-six other payloads out there. Yeah. And then it has, lunar dust has properties such as damaged electronics. And because you're using magnets, it could interfere with other payloads. So we have to be very careful with our testing protocol and dispersion of the lunar dust. So those are things that came up with our meeting that we had.
So what was the best part of this experience for you?
Um, I'd say the future, really. This is really just the gateway into securing all of our futures right now. So that's probably the best part, just knowing that it's kind of insured now.
As someone who wanted to be an aerospace engineer from the beginning, this is like a really mind-blowing opportunity and I-
Yeah, well.
I guess it is.
And I'm one of those little- So I guess, I guess you're happy about making that choice, your freshman, your eighth-grade year to come to a vocational high school.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Guys, it's a great opportunity.
It's a great opportunity.
Front for a ride. Committee man Bahu and Gigi, you know, left in the rounds taking their part. Just make sure, if you guys need, make sure you just go right to these guys.
So, yeah, so as a school, we're here to support you, and we wish you a great success.
We're extremely proud, and you make our school look good.
I'm national, it's national.
Well, this is great. But I like the way they give credit to the entire team. That is a fantastic quality.
Well, two of the members aren't here with us, there's unfortunate things.
Unfortunately. But I have to tell you, when the email came in, that it was confidential email, I thought it was spam. And I almost knew it was you. And I actually called the NASA engineers, I was like, you know what? I almost deleted that email, because I thought that was just a spam email. And they're like, oh, you, you wouldn't be the only, there was like three other teachers they had to call, because they did that, they didn't think it was them.
Wow, wow, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Enjoy the next one. Thanks for grabbing on so hard.
Thank you very much.
And I'm very tired.
And thank you to our families. You all should be very proud of your children. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
It's incredible.
It's an incredible experience.
So we, yeah, we do. It's easy.
Yes, we do. Revel in the moment.
Yes, it's always good.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Okay, thank you, everyone. The next item on our agenda is our cooperative, my agenda, is our Cooperative Education Report. And the report is in your packets. And the report that was provided to you indicates a hundred and seventy-one senior students participating in co-op education as the end of January. However, I always love to bring good news. So at this time, I'd like to report that there are a hundred and ninety-five total students participating in co-op at this time. A hundred and eighty-one of them are seniors, which is thirty-eight percent of the class of two thousand and twenty-two, and fourteen are juniors and counting. And a copy of this report is in your packet. So thank you again to our Cooperative Education Director for doing an awesome job getting our students out on co-op. The next item on my agenda is an update on the general health and safety protocols. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about the mask mandate. On February ninth, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education announced that the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education will no longer be renewing the mask state requirement after it expires on February twenty-eighth. So as a result, there will no longer be a mask mandate in the state, in the state for K through twelve schools. And as a result, effective Monday, February twenty-eighth, the mask requirement will be lifted. And therefore, here at Greater Lowell Technical High School, beginning February twenty-eighth, students and staff will no longer be required to wear a mask in the school building. It's important to note that any member of the school community who chooses to continue to still wear a mask will be able to do so, and we will support and respect everyone in the choices that they make. It's also important to note that even though masks will no longer be required inside the school building, masks will still be required to be worn on school buses, because this is a federal order that has not been lifted. Any questions about the mask mandate?
No, it's great news. I just tell, how about the polling and the testing?
So that's my next, my next item. So the next item on my agenda is the new statewide testing program. So we did a survey, we did a survey to our staff and families. And as a result of the survey that came back, it was seventy percent of the individuals who took the survey wanted to opt into the new testing program. So as a result of that, we have decided to make the shift to the new testing program. And we have already began to make that shift. And I'll talk a little bit about what that new testing program looks like. So the new testing program consists of a distribution of at-home testing kits that will be distributed on a bi-weekly basis to whoever, students and staff who opt into the program. And participants who opt in will be asked to take a test each week on, before, prior to school on Monday. That's a day that we just decided, any school system who opts into this program has the choice to choose the day that they, they prefer. And we opted to choose Monday, because we do pool testing on Thursday. So anybody that opts into this program will have the ability to test at home using that antigen test on, on Monday, and then come to school and be part of our pool testing on Thursdays. Anybody who opted into this program, who receives a test kit, again, should be using it prior to school on Monday, and they're asked to report their results, any positive results, to the nurses. Staff would report their positive results to our Director of Human Resources. In addition to the test kit, we will continue with our symptomatic testing, which is if a student or staff member comes to school, and while they're here during the school day, they begin to exhibit symptoms of COVID nineteen, we have the ability to provide them with a BioNex Now Rapid Test on site, and we'll continue that as part of the program. We will also continue with pool testing, which is, of course, here every Thursday. And any pools, any pools that come back positive, those individuals are retested on Friday. It's important to note that close contact tracing and test-in stay is no longer a part of this program, and we will no longer be doing that. Do we have any questions on the new testing program? So we will begin the program on February twenty-eighth. So we are actually just distributing tests to those who signed opt-in already. Teachers were able to pick up their kits on Wednesday and Thursday who opted in. I mean, staff and students will be picking up their kits tomorrow in the mall during their lunch periods by grade level. And that is the new testing program. It's important also to say that we will continue to use our other mitigation strategies, which include, you know, continuing to have vaccination clinics, maintaining good hand hygiene, good cleaning practices, our ventilation systems, and also staying home when we're sick. So all these mitigation, mitigation strategies together hope to keep a healthy and safety school community. And that is-
Anybody that tests positive, would they be required to come to school?
So, no, 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 no. No.
If, like, on Monday, you know, they have to bring in?
So, no, you don't bring in anything, it's all at home. This is all at home. So it's an at-home test kit that we will provide bi-weekly on Friday to students. Each test kit has two test kits, that's why we're only distributing them bi-weekly, right? And they would be required to use the test kit prior to school on Monday. And if they tested positive, they should definitely stay home and report their results to the school nurse, saying that they tested positive. And the adults that tested positive will report those results to the Director of Human Resources, as we have been doing throughout the pandemic.
So there's no more contact tracing?
So there is no more contact tracing and no more test-in stay. That's why we're, we're giving individuals the opportunity to get their at-home test kit. And the opt-in is rolling. Some people signed up now. They can opt in at any time they choose, and we will be able to provide them with test kits. Any questions on the new testing program and the lifting of the mask mandate?
I'd like to move a pause.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's important to note the bus, the requirement of, of the mask on the buses.
Yeah, just, that's federal, it's often-
It's, it's federal, and there's, yeah, we just have to-
Do the buses have face masks? Do the drivers have face masks?
Yes, the drivers have masks, and we have been supporting our, our drivers with masks for our students.
I'm almost afraid to ask this question. Do we know anything about the vaccination rate here at the school?
Yep, we do. So, so I have like an approximation that we are nearing the fifty percent vaccination rate.
Close enough, all right.
So there is another clinic coming up. It's Tuesday, I'm sorry, if it's either March seventh or eighth, I don't have a calendar, but it's that Tuesday, and it will be three to seven. And there'll be information coming out soon with a link to register. But it's the eighth, so Tuesday, March eighth is another-
So that's available to students, families, and staff, right?
Correct.
Good.
Yeah. So those will continue again, as I said, all of our mitigation strategies and all of them working together should help us. It's also important to note that the numbers are going down significantly.
Great. All positive news on that Friday?
All positive news, and I hope that continues. And at this time, that, looks like that's the end of my report. But before I go, I'd just like to wish all of our students and their families and our staff a well-deserved February break. And I hope that they have fun, but at the same time, stay safe. And thank you all again for your support.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill, great job.
Thank you.
Onto the report of the business manager. Here he comes.
How's that, Jill?
Had a busy day.
Yeah, just have one item for you this evening, though, and that's just a list of transfers. So as I mentioned in our budget and finance meeting, we moved a bunch of money into the plant contracted services account at the beginning of the year, once we recreated our budget in the November timeframe, and have been using those resources since that time to help facilitate purchases of equipment, supplies, other things needed throughout the school. So you'll see a list of supplies and other materials that were requested through our department chairs and department heads that we were able to go ahead and get a purchase for. And now we just need to move the funding over to support that.
Okay, motion to approve one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars from Plant Services to a number of our different departments.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Tassius?
Yes.
Yes. That is it. Nice, thank you. Thank you.
Good night, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Onto old business. My term as chair is closing to an end. Is there any old business that we can wipe out off the list?
I got the fuck coming.
Yeah, that's gotta stay. Anything else? All right, on to new business. Any new business to want to discuss? Any committee men motions? Report of some committees, the finance subcommittee? Think you want to say anything?
Finance Subcommittee, we had a meeting earlier this evening with a proposal for our new F Y twenty-three budget. It looks like we had a nice meeting. However, we only proceeded to about half of the reading. Therefore, I think the next school committee will be able to go ahead and elaborate a little bit more on that.
Good, thank you. Okay, thank you. Executive session. We're going to need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, eighty-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if in the open meeting may be detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares. Support staff, I need a motion and then I need a second.
What, what do we?
Going to the executive-
We need to take a vote after executive session, I think.
I think so.
Yes.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hea? Mr. O'Hea?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. And if a vote's required, we'll have to come back in open session. We'll take a short break at this time. All of the meeting back to, uh, order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hea? Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Getchere?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Yeah. Can I have a motion to approve the three-year contract for the Greater Lowell Educational Support Staff for July first, two thousand twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, with a two-and-a-half percent salary increase for each of the three years? A second?
Second.
And then roll call?
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. And then I have a request or a motion to change the school committee meeting and the public hearing for the budget to March twenty-second. I will need a motion to do that.
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. And now can I have a motion to adjourn from public meetings?
No discussion.
Any discussion? How about a second? Roll call.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.